If you happen to hear random voices, I don't know how good these microphones are. There was an accident just a little bit east of here on 31. So our firehouse is full of active people that are talking to each other loudly.
We're doing something loud.
Or something.
Good evening.
Get some stuff for you.
That's the direction you go.
That's okay.
Try to sit next to her or sit next to me.
Exactly.
I thought you were one caller.
There's only, yeah, Mr. Plan with that, but there are a couple of folks that we need to.
Some of this stuff, this is all ours. Chase.
We are being recorded. Yeah. We're going live out in the world.
All right.
If somebody's interested.
Elliot, who's gonna watch us?
Zach might. Checking, just checking.
They're a lot better.
Oh, I guess.
Do use your outside or teacher's voice. So that's pretty much a little bit better. Well, where else is my mic?
So at six o'clock, no calls in the quarter. Congratulations to the flag, United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Here.
True. Direct. It's like this professor. True. Here, yep.
I'm here.
And Mary Drew has resigned, so we do not have. Okay. We'll have to work together and make sure we record accordingly.
If there are people out there watching who would like to be on the planning commission, let us know.
Yeah. Dave Davis was one. Okay, okay, but since we have no plug here, let's see. So is there one call button?
Excellent.
Okay, we have a group agenda.
I approve the agenda as posted.
One second. In the discussion. On here.
Thanks.
I have proposed passes. For the January meeting minutes.
Having read through the minutes, I propose we accept the January 20th minimum minutes as presented.
I was going to add, in the discussion. Nope, on there, I have proposed. So all business, I've got that down here, but as for the last planning mission, we were looking at two sets of minutes. And because now it's set on the planning commission, we can approve. So if we go transacting, the previous planning commission said they want to deliver to program and so be it. But we weren't there, so we can't really say anything about that. So just a point of order. Okay, so that's the way it is.
There is a recording of the January 6th of planning commission meeting that's available on YouTube. There is an audio recording of the last meeting in December, I forget the date. I want to say the 16th or the 18th. It is available if you want to listen to it. Send me an email, frisky@inlandtownship.org.
Okay, new business. Zach, who are you listening to us? We'll call you if we have some questions. Do you have the draft? The master plan, the survey instrument, Zach put together. And it also took some time to add some information to. Maybe we should go question to question.
Can we get that last one?
No, there you go.
Listen here. Okay, I'm sorry. All right. I did forward that to you on email.
Today? Oh, I had by two o'clock I was gone.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't assume that everybody had it, so. These are the questions that Zach put together for us. And so basically, what we're gonna do is take a look at them. And do it look good, do it not so bad? Yeah, to take it from. So. The first one is which following best describes your association with the township? When you go to the president, part time, working in the township, but don't live here and other. So. I guess the first question, we kind of. Been about, oh, for some sense. Hey Zach. Are you there?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Hey, are you, are you on the phone?
Yes.
They're going through the survey right now. Do you, do you want to see if they want to put me on speaker while you're with?
I got you on speaker right now.
Okay.
That's me, that's me in the middle if you're watching.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha. The sound quality is a little bit scratchy, so I can't tell who is talking, what you guys are talking about.
Okay, now we just, yeah, we just started taking a look at the draft, the survey instrument and looking at question number one.
That's what I figured out. While I saw you guys there, I was wondering if you just wanted me to walk you through it, because a lot of it is based on the last month's discussion. Would that be all right?
Yes.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes, thank you. Get close to the speaker person. People who are watching, they're watching as you too, they'll hear you too.
Okay, well, for those of you who haven't had, um, good to see you, eventually I'll see you in person. You had a look at the talk, the last meeting, um, which, so I'm trying to go to in depth on what a master plan is to be talking. Talked about it a lot last time. Next time I can bring us a sheet back out like what the master plan is. But the way I summarize it very quickly is it's two parts. One part is the data about your community that networks or classes collecting and giving rate of, kind of an area will be able to get on the community. And then the other part is the public input process. And so the survey is the first portion of that. And so really, when we're going to the survey, we want to make sure that we're covering anything, transportation, I don't suppose, then infrastructure, land use. Anything that you think you could, uh, you would need public support for, or you do want to have people aware of, or have their support signed. That's what we want to include in the survey. And also keeping in mind, we want to keep it to about five, 10 minutes maximum. People usually check out after that point. And for some of the more in-depth questions you might want to ask, we are doing a public input session later in the process, probably in the summer when those leasing residents are back. So without further ado, I'll just go through this survey real quick. So first question is, and again, this is gonna be an online survey, you're seeing it in paper form, and we can talk about the paper forms later. But really, we're gonna target this to an online audience. This first question here, which is telling us your association, what we're trying to hear is just, um, basically base people out of the survey that they don't live or work in the township. And then if they're a permanent resident somewhere else, or they, because they work inland but lives in the rest, we want to know that, so it's good to know. You know, if people can't afford to live inland, for example, look at where they're, why is that the case? Next page, question three. This is just trying to get a broad idea of where people see the community as it is and where they would like to see it. So just using words or phrases to describe inland as it is today, and inland as they'd like to see in the future. Next, you've got some of your kind of impact on development question. Choose all those viable businesses or services would you like to see developed or expanded in the land township? This, this feedback here is pretty all encompassing. If there's anything that you'd like to add, just let me know. So I'm just gonna go through this quick and then let you review. And I figure we will, you can take your notes, because I don't want you to finalize survey tonight. I'd like you to take a little bit of time to think about it. So I'll go through it and you guys spend the next few weeks coming up with some ideas, we'll finalize it and get it out at the next meeting. And then at the next meeting, we'll also talk about some other planning stuff. Next question from the list below, what are the top five factors that inform your decision to continue residing in a township? So that's, this is helpful for us for a lot of reasons. You'll find in some communities, it's, it's all about the cost, and other communities, they move there specifically for the scenic appearance and or the safety and security. When we get a little closer to the urbanized centers, they might say, you know, it's more for family or for the culture. So this is just getting on, what does any township do well and how can people around that?
Next one. Zach, 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 can I interrupt? With, um, the way you have a format, do you just pick the five that you are most important? Have you ever done a survey where you ranked the five? One is most important, five is the least important of the five that I think are important?
Yeah, we can do that. It's a little more, um, it takes a little bit more for the participant to do that. Yeah, that might take like a minute for them to do, whereas just choosing your top five might take like 30 seconds. I can do that question in both formats and put it into the survey software and then you can take a look at it inside for yourself. Okay. If anything's feasible.
Sounds good.
So the next question is, that's a basic statistic for speech. If you guys are like any other community at work, that's very hard to, it's hard to get word out to people what's going on. And so this is just getting at, you know, local news, social media, actually reach out to you, actually like, you know, something's happening in the township. Top, next question, where are your top three priorities, best question, focus on adding to the community? This is just getting to, you know, what do people see as lack and what they'd like to see grown. One of the things, so you've got, we're housing, you have the developments, commercial development, like industrial and original spaces, those can be more great. And then we like to put an option there for people who are thinking, you know, everything's great, let's keep the built environment how it is, so that's maintaining small town character. And then they'll try that on the growth potential, well, building, liking some of these, well, you know, I'm not expecting people to. And inland township to be all that, well, building, liking, but you never know.
Quick, quick, man. Can I, can I, can I interrupt again? Or do you want us to hold questions to the end or questions? When you have listings like this in the software online, are they just in this order or are they randomized when they're listed?
It can be either works, it can go up here in whatever order I set them in. But we can, I think, I believe there's a feature that randomizes number as well, if you want to do that.
Fantastic.
Yep. So for that, question number eight, just because I'm not as familiar, because we just started working with you guys, how is the broadband connectivity in inland?
It's, it's. It's good. We're, inland is pockmarked with a lot of either state or DNR land, which makes running lines a little bit difficult. Spectrum was in three years ago, maybe four, three years ago laying lines. And then cherry.
Communication.
Cherry communications. Just did a bunch of the summer, so they're pretty much on top of it.
Yeah, but the, uh, Betsy County commissioners have put it on there themselves to get broadband into Betsy Township, Betsy County. So there's, there's a real effort in trying to get everybody connected. But the challenge that we have is if it's, if it's over, it's broadcast over, uh, over the towers. Betsy County is kind of, uh, uh, appealing to places very early. And so the cloud of this is being put into the ground. So it's, it's taking some time, but they're working on it.
Okay, so let's, let's keep that option on there, because like you said, it's probably the case that a lot of those, like northeast side of the township residents have it. But maybe, you know, like you said, where there's sparse development near the state forest area that is in the south.
Yeah.
So the township, that's probably a little less.
An unrelated but related question, not, not just to this, but even, even if all the residents, I mean, we're a township of around 2,400. And we don't have a lot of political club. One, one of the things that I'd like to focus on with this survey are things that we can actually, as a township, either as a planning commission or a board of trustees, can actually take action. And other than saying to broadband companies, geez, we'd love to have you here. I don't know that there's much, you know, and correct me if I'm wrong, you know, if there's something that we can do to help move things along, you know, certainly we would. But I don't know how much, how much sway we have trying to entice a broadband company to expand their services.
Well, I guess I would look at it this way. If you, if you get a survey response rate where every single person says broadband is a, is a big issue for them. And then a bunch of federal money becomes available to develop broadband, that's something that you can point to to say, you know, we should have, we should get this money.
Okay.
So that's, that's ready to look at. I know what you mean, a lot of this is, it's like, oh, okay, you say you wanna, I keep dwelling here, people don't have the, but I just look at this as being able to sign your sources when you, when you go for money.
That's, that's a great point, you know, I, I think, you know, I'm learning the role of planning commission and that's why we hired you. And I, you just dedicated me on something that I hadn't thought about, so thank you.
I, I'm here all night. Next question here, this is more, because the last meeting I was at, we talked a lot about the US 31 quarter. Obviously, that's, that's gonna be your guys' main, you know, economic development tool is that quarter, the fact that people are driving to the dunes, from trappers, back and forth. You know, that, that's gonna be, that's your major economic development tool. We had talked at a previous meeting about the potential of the planning commission, making a recommendation to the board to designate more of the corridor as commercial or mixed use zoning. Has, is that a conversation that the rest of you had, is that ringing a bell, or is this new information that I'm reading from previous mission?
Um, let's put it this way, you're dealing with an entirely new planning commission. There, there were four new requirements and our fifth person, which was a hullover, had timing issues and other commitments. So she has just recently tendered her resignation. So we're, we're entirely new. And. Let's just say, I don't, I don't know that this planning commission's view of the future is necessarily the same as the last commission's. And I, to be honest, speaking strictly for myself, that's one of the reasons I think this survey is so crucial. Need to find out what the residents really want as opposed to, you know, a bunch of people sitting behind a table or sitting in offices thinking, oh, this is what we should do. Let's find out what, what the residents really want to do, you know, maybe it's nothing, maybe it's something great that we've never thought of. But that's why we're doing the survey.
Yes, yeah. Okay, you want to make sure, so when, if any of these questions seem like they're on a topic that you guys aren't interested in asking about at all, just let me know and I can, y'all take out those. Obviously, this is your survey, so I don't want to make sure it reflects that. Was there some, is somebody else gonna say something?
Yes, this number nine, the commercial business should be on smaller lots and have shared driveways. I don't know, I don't know, I, that, um, I don't know, I don't understand why we'd be looking for that kind of a question. It's, it's rather specific and it looks to me as somebody is meeting somebody.
Yeah, let me, so in the context of that from the last meeting, the, so sort of the assumption that I go under for a lot of this region is that as Traverse City builds out, you're gonna see a lot of development pressure in communities like yours. Where, where there's a housing stock and, and, you know, you're, you're close to a lot of the region's best natural resources. You're gonna see development pressure. So the question we're trying to figure out in this survey is not how do we prevent development, because that's fairly impossible. But if development were to come, development pressure were to come, what would that look like? And so if you have demand for a bunch of new commercial businesses, because let's just say you get, let's just say 15 years from now, you get a big condominium development and now your township has 400 new residents. Now that calls for more services, because for everyone that moves to the community, myself excluded, they need a barber. They need a pharmacy, they need a, a bunch of services. So what we're assuming is that your commercial corridor is gonna see more demand for commercial uses. Now, that means that either your commercial area expands to accommodate more businesses or you build more businesses in the areas that you already have designated. In other words, that's your commercial development. So that, that's just context for, for some of these, especially that number nine. That might not be worded the best way, but that's sort of what it's getting at is I, you know, if we see commercial development, you know, maybe instead of having one business on two acres and then one business on two acres, maybe we could have like a town center where, you know, you got eight businesses and, and some kind of, you know, get that some kind of complex and shared property. Does that make sense?
Well, yes, it's like the strip mall in, in Honor. You know. It has, actually, they used, they used to have three entrances off 31 and narrowed it down to two. But yeah, it makes sense. Now, where, where do, where do we monitor businesses and where do we want them to?
Yeah. Well. I, I think that's, the, the question I think is okay. It's just, I think it's kind of leading me as far as smaller, that's in share.
We gotta see it, we gotta see it.
Yeah. We're concerned about too, so.
Okay, so let me ask, um, I agree with the question, let's reword the question, but does the sentiment of the question make sense?
Yes, I think so.
Okay, let me figure out a way to reword that then and we'll start with the next game.
All right.
Um, I'm just putting it out there real quick. Uh, the next question is regarding signage, so I saw that you guys adopted your zoning ordinance in 2020, correct?
Correct.
And that, did you guys go through a lot of discussion about your sign ordinance and, and is, is that exactly what you want to be? Because if it is, let's not ask this question.
No, no, we, basically, we were a joint planning commission with Homestead Township, which is just the rest of us. And when we split off, um, we just basically reworded our zoning ordinances to split those off. So I don't think we went through the details as far as going through and correcting or making sure that it's reading exactly what we wanted.
Okay.
I think, I think all the, the zoning ordinances we really have to take a look at after we get through our master plan here.
Okay. Um, so that question is good, just in terms of figuring out where people are at in terms of settings in the community.
Yes.
So if everyone don't take the billboards, you know, I don't, it's like, you know, you might as say, don't have a billboard for your business, but if everyone says, hey, I, I want to keep the scene huge, let's have memorial signage, or I'm sorry, monument signage. And, you know, something on your building, that's okay. But the note I put in here is that for each of those, we can put a, for example, in the survey, when people are scrolling through, they can see what we're talking about. So, you know, unless you're all residents, you know, what is a banner sign? I'd like to use an example, what is a monument sign? So that's, that sounds like that one's good to go.
No, I, I, no. Question I have on it is, the way it's, it's put here is you're voting for, um, I, I would. Do we choose?
Do we have to choose absolutely which one we do?
Yeah, and the one billboards, you know, if you give me a choice, it's, it's only to vote for it, you know, I'm gonna leave it blank. Now, does that vote, does that count as the vote against it, or is it just somebody skipped it? As opposed to giving me a thumbs up, thumbs down for each of them? You know, I don't want to see billboards, I don't want to see monuments signs, banners, I don't know what those are, but okay. You know, I, I don't wanna see billboards, I don't wanna see monuments signs, banners, I don't know what those are, but okay. Uh, illuminated signs, definitely not, uh, moving, oh, flashing signs, no, blue signs as well, you know, it's their business. Uh, you know, that, that kinda thing.
Okay, so I, I think because, because this is actually an important ordinance for, for your appearance of the corridor, um. Why don't we do, they vote on each one. So they'll get one page that says, do you put your score of billboard signs that allow you to order, and that says yes, no. Or in some, in some manner, you know, in, you know what I mean, they, uh, either they're okay with it or it's a certain height.
Yep.
Um, and we do that for each of those, but does that, would that be good?
So it will be two different pages, like they have, oh, we're gonna concentrate on one page. They're gonna have to click on.
So if we're doing it like the, the voting yes, no, or in some cases. I would probably only include, so it would be, to answer your first question, it would be on separate pages. But if that's the case, just for ease of use, I would only limit it to signs that are. I guess I wouldn't worry so much about like the banner signs, I would be thinking more about the monument signs, the billboards.
Couldn't you, uh, put a, a box next to each one of those, yes and no?
Um, I, I could, let me do it in the software, because, um. If people are taking out their laptops, not really concerning, maybe on the phone, can I, can I get a little? And, and you get a lot of scrolling, so I'll put it in the software and still have this.
Okay.
Um, next, which of the following do you think would improve access to the appearance of businesses along the US thirty one corridor? So this one is really about, you know, the aesthetics, but making sure that if there's a lot of businesses on the corridor, that. Um, you're not necessarily doing a curb cut, I'll, I'll show you an example from. My hometown of Saginaw Township that I usually use, where you've got a curb cut like every fifty feet. And it looks terrible, it's not safe at all, um, so that's what this question's aiming to, well. And this is something that we ask for all of our corridor, uh, any tree that's working with a corridor, so. What do people ask in front, so there's improved signage, we talked about that a little bit, shared curb cuts and access rights. Uh, larger setbacks from the roadway, that usually helps to, uh. Improve the, the, the view, especially if you add landscaping. Um, better lighting, improve the size of building exteriors, share parking and buildings closer together. Um, that's getting at that town center development idea, uh, parking in the rear of buildings rather than along the roadway or in front of the roadway. Or other, uh, the one that I forgot about that I wanna, I would add in there is landscaping.
Yeah, so I can just suggest that, yes.
And especially because right now you have commercial and residential on the corridor. Um, your, your, um, your buffer requirements are gonna be important as well. So is there adequate screening between commercial and residential? We, we wanna hear that from people. Um, the next one, so this was based on what we were talking about with the last planning commission. Um, their thought process, and obviously you guys are free to agree or disagree as you see fit. Their thought process was that residential development. You think residential development probably shouldn't be occurring on the corridor itself, it should be in sort of a subdivision or. Interior of the township, um, and that the corridor should really be reserved for, uh, commercial uses. Or if it's going to be residential, it would be a mixed use development where it's something like, I can show images of examples, but something like. Um, uh, retail services on the first floor and then like condos or apartments above that.
Right now, our ordinance is allowed for residential. Uh, to be on commercial property, which I was found kind of interesting, because usually mortgage companies don't like that. Usually they like, if you get a residence, it's on a residential property. We actually had, uh, one couple come in, uh, a few years back and actually had to, to split off. Uh, from their commercial, put it into residential so they could get a mortgage. So I think we're gonna have to take a look at that zoning, and I, I guess I would agree that. Having residents in, in a commercial zone is, is not desirable, but.
Also, let's.
I mean, the question's.
I, I, I think from the, from the large perspective, let's talk about just overall aesthetics of the community perspective. Um, do you wanna see more residential coming into the corridor? Do you wanna see just commercial coming into the corridor, or do you wanna see like a, a mixed use coming into the corridor?
Well, I, I guess.
We also have farming.
Yeah, personally, I'd like to see it mixed, because I don't wanna see, uh, uh. See what we're seeing in Traverse City, but is that realistic? I mean, we're, we're trying to plan for the future, understanding that there's gonna be pressure on that, but, um, I guess. It's, it's a big question.
It also depends on how far out we think we're planning, and for the next five years. I don't know if we need to change much at all, ten years, uh, maybe, let's, let's see what the next five years brings. Um, ten years from now, we might have a very different answer, we might be in a very different economy. So, I don't know.
Yeah, so for future land use, we're typically, you know, it, it varies community to community, some are experiencing a great rapid change, but. Uh, and if they need to look just like two years in the future with you guys, I would say twenty to thirty years. You know, what's, what's the likelihood, um. Yeah, so I, you know, the, the way I'm looking at it now, um, having gone briefly through your ordinance. Is you have two and a half acre minimums in your rural residential, and most of your residential is that rural, rural residential. And then the rest is commercial, primarily allowed in corridor. And then, uh, the vast majority of the rest is your forest, uh, forest migration, I think it's forest preservation. Um, so right now, as your ordinance is ready, if. Do you guys solve that development pressure, what you would see most likely? Is nothing but single thin houses on two and a half acre lots. Um, if, if that's what you want to see, um, you know, keep, keep this it. Um, if, 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 well, I mean, now, that's gonna eat into a lot of land and it's not. Um, the most efficient use of land, but if that's the aesthetic you're coming there going for. Then, you know, I'm not here to tell you to do something that you, you don't wanna do.
Um, what's the alternative?
Um, so the alternative would be. So I'll, I'll use Mayfield Township as the extreme example in Grand Traverse County, their south of Traverse City. They see the development pressure coming and then they have a lot of prime farmland. So what they did was they went with, what's called cluster development, so they make. And this is, I would not recommend this for your rural residential, but this is what they did in their rural areas. They said, uh, mainly to build anything on parcel is forty acres, you have to have forty acres to, to develop. But if you have that forty acres. You have to preserve seventy-five percent of it for open space recreation or farmland. And then in that last twenty-five percent, that last ten acres, you can build as much as you want, allow growth by building a health code. So the farmer still gets their retirement, uh, developer still has to develop, and the open space is still preserved. That's, that's sort of the extreme option for when you're really a farming community, that's seeing a lot of problem culture. Um, for you guys, maybe like the other option would be to have multiple residential zoning districts. Where you focus, uh, a smaller parcel size, you know, maybe like a half acre. Or a quarter acre, um, near some of your existing amenities. And then further out in township or in different areas, you still maintain that square area, you don't hire, you get. Make it five acre, ten acre, maybe instead of preserving the rural territory. It is actually a cool topic, that's one of the future land use discussion. Um, what I'm trying to get to. Kind of with this survey, and I may not have worded it correctly, is just trying to figure out, uh, where people are at in terms of. The corridor itself, you know, would they be okay with some denser development happening along that corridor? Assuming that your own township, uh, is, is gonna see that demand, that makes sense.
You know, so it's still focusing on the corridor, not, not blaming that though.
In this question, yeah, I'm, I'm questioning twelve, so the question is, does this work makes use of the whole corridor? And, uh, the responses are yes, that's a work makes use of the whole, so, so the last question was, was looking at. Uh, doing either commercial or mixed use across the entire corridor, so expanding that current commercial district. Um, I don't know if you guys are of the same mindset, or if you're trying to keep the commercial district confined to where it is.
Well, again, um, I think we're probably, uh, probably have mixed, mixed feelings about. The development, but I think we need to plan for, for it to develop, um. So.
Are most of your commercial parcels, um, improved already? Do you have, do you have a lot of dating commercials, or is it pretty much all improved?
Oh, it's, I think it's probably fifty percent.
Not a whole.
Yeah, I'm not really sure, but I don't think there's a huge number of commercial properties now. Okay, so this is upcoming, but there are, there are some residents who are on the thirty one. And, um, so in hindsight, the folks that, that come in. Have complained that they're, in the master plan, they are commercial, and we said, well, we're not commercial, we're residential, so. Yeah.
Yeah, that is really the, I just, we're wanting to go with the mixed use designation.
Right.
All right, Zach, question. In your experience and other surveys, do the survey takers understand what mixed use is?
Um, it depends on the community, um. So that's kind of my, my question, while I said this, would mean that parcels would have essentially in commercial uses. Typically with retail and first one housing above, um, because that's most likely what I'm looking like. Um, if, if you guys don't think that this is clear enough. You could figure out kind of a broader question to ask, and then say. Kind of the many gritty commercial corridor questions for all the people in the session. Okay. Yeah, so I, I guess, before I get away from, uh, from this question. Yeah, I heard you guys, what exactly do you want to know from residents about the corridor itself?
Good question.
If we, like you say, okay, corridor and thirty one is all commercial. In the master plan, again, there's houses there, and some are farmed and courses, and, uh. So, yeah, um. That's a good question.
To me, it's a real conundrum, because we need, we need to educate. The public on what the choices are. And we also need to understand the direction they wanna go, so we can put the right choices in front of them. So it's kind of a, you know, chicken and egg thing, to a, a smaller extent, um. You know, to me, it's a simpler question. Or a simplified version of the question is, do you want things to change at all? No, I like it the way it is, uh, do you wanna see more businesses? Well, I, I don't wanna see more commercial businesses that, you know, just take up space and maybe, maybe are ugly or maybe, you know, are done very well. Um. Uh, I, I'd like to, you know, I, I would like a nice, you know, mid-level restaurant that I don't have to drive ten minutes. To get to, you know, if I drive five minutes, that'd be great, or right on thirty one, or a pharmacy, or. You know, this is something that we don't have, um, we don't need another gas station.
That's good, I don't see a, like a town center or a.
Gillett is an interesting little township, because it is, by and large, it is a, a bedroom. Community, uh, you know, a lot of retirees, a lot of people work, uh, and if they work, most of them are. Not Indian, um, because that's not where the jobs are, because there are a lot of businesses in general, you know, so it's, it's. We are not necessarily chasing our tail, but, uh, you know, how do we want things to develop, you know? Good question, you know, and part of it is, you know, we, we have just east, yes, east of us by a few hundred feet. Uh, we have, the township itself owns a thirty acre parcel. How do we wanna see that develop? Do we wanna see it develop with, you know, a bunch of little businesses, a strip mall, apartment complex? Um, turn it back to farming, you know, I don't have the answer.
Right. Okay, that, that's hopeful, I think, um, so I'll give you an example, I think the. That question nine of commercial businesses should be on small lots, so as an example, that might be too specific. Let's, uh, let's focus on like the question. Or man here, question twelve, that's probably too specific, that's something we can say. For the, uh, session, um, I'll focus on some of that question thirteen and fourteen. So what type of housing would you be okay with seeing along the corridor? What type of housing would you be okay with seeing further away from the corridor?
Mm-hmm.
Um, that would be kind of higher level, um, you know, we might. Be more curious, because you guys have a lot of retirees that people like to see. Uh, kind of development where they don't have to take care of long, um, as an example. Uh, so let's have that higher level, uh, the next question, did you have a form of message to preserve agriculture? That's, that's just getting to your basic, you know. Is your current zoning, is your current zoning would not preserve agriculture, so. You know, if everyone, if every single researcher in survey says you gotta preserve the ag, I would say, okay. You guys need to have an agricultural preservation district and district to your rural residential, um. Next question, that's the rural residential question, um. I think based on what we talked about, that one might as well be too specific. And I could take that one out if, if, if you're agreeing with that, that's just your rural residential.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're, John is, John is saying that, uh, he feels that's a good question.
Yeah, I remember when that came about, that was a big deal, you know, everybody wanted space.
Definitely.
I remember, I, I think it started when everyone started to develop their bigger parcels, and that's when they came up to them.
And I think that'll relate somewhat to, to keeping.
And I think, yeah, I think now you have to have the subdivision to get smaller, that's, I think that's.
In our commercial. Special zoning, it allows to build on one acre, yeah. Uh, because there's, right now, there's residential allowed and commercial. There's a question of, well, can we just develop a bunch of. A bunch of one acre parcels and put houses on them, that's.
That's, that's, does it distinguish between the use?
Well, it's, it's, it's implied, but it isn't spelled out first. Spelled out well enough for some, so they'd like to see it as a loophole.
Yeah.
Basically, it says you can have this, uh, I can't remember, the, the minimum size, five acre or two and a half acre. But if you own a business, let, let's say I have a little machine shop. And, you know, I'd like to build a little house next to it to cut down on my commute time. Or because I work late at night, or, you know, whatever the reason, I can designate an acre of that property and build a home on. Now, the, if you read the ordinance as it is, it implies that there's a business. Well, where, where's the business? Well, it doesn't say you have to have a business. Well, okay, it doesn't say you need to lock your doors at night either, you know, or.
Well, it also says you can only have one primary dwelling unit for a parcel too, though.
I'd have to reread it, but I don't think it's that specific. It, it's very loosely written, but, you know, the, the implication is that you have a primary business first. At least that's the way I read it.
Okay, yeah, let's, let's shore that up through the process.
Exactly. Exactly. Number seventeen, um.
Yeah, I missed spelling from there. I should say why do you think the parcel size should be? And then it's, that, that will have the software, whatever the answer they choose for sixteen. Um, you know, link to what the next question seventeen, so they say lower than the parcel size. Do you think the parcel size should be less than seven point five?
Oh, question seventeen, um, maybe we'll be able to actually have some option. Um, you know, you can do zero point twenty five, zero point five, zero point seventy five, you know, whatever the range that you choose.
I guess, so if they say, um, let's say they say, I used the two and a half to be the minimum parcel size as sixteen. Say, what do you think the minimum parcel size should be?
You got a pretty good.
I said, so you're. I love, I love, I love people, some people might say a hundred and some people might say three.
You, you, you got a good response. I love, I love people, some people might say a hundred and some people might say three. You, you, you got a good response. You got a good response to this kind of question in other surveys.
Um, and totally different, like, because some communities, there's like, there's one parcel that everyone is worried about. They're all knowledgeable about it. And they can, they can, they know the zoning ordinance in other communities that, um, they just don't talk about it and it's not something they thought of. But, you know, parcel size, I, I don't think too many people are any confused by that.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm not confused. I'm just, I'm wondering how, how responsive they are to it.
Um. Uh, most people go, most people either answer just the first two questions and nothing else, or they answer the entire thing.
Hmm, interesting.
They don't see a lot of in-between.
Okay.
Um, question eighteen, inland township zoning ordinance requires new developments that contain a site plan to dedicate a portion of the development to maintaining open space for passive recreation. And so the idea I use here is for a new subdivision development on forty acres, how much open space do you think should be preserved for open space? Um, and that, it goes from none to twenty-five percent or over twenty-five percent. Typically, communities will do like fifteen percent on the conservative side, and then maybe they might go up to twenty-five.
I, I, to me, this strikes me as another question that'd be better posed at a public hearing.
Yeah.
Keep it visual.
Yeah, yep.
Okay. All right, I'll take that one out. Next, uh, okay, the next question relates to that. Um, so this is going to, this is something we ran into in Mayfield. They had, uh, similar to you guys, although yours is less specific because it doesn't, it doesn't designate a portion of the parcel to be open space. It just says that a site plan requiring a special use has to have, uh, some open space preservation. But it doesn't say how much. Um, that's why the previous question was in there. Um, the issue that they ran into in Mayfield is that they had, I think, a twenty percent open space requirement for condominium and subdivision developments. And then it just ended up being like fallow land that no one used. And so what they did was went to update their zoning ordinance to make it so that the developer has to put something on that land to make it more useful, like a walking trail or picnic tables or something like that. Um, and then that typically gets maintained through the condo association. Um, so if we're taking out the.
We're taking.
I mean, we could.
I, I would.
More context, or we could get rid of that from the last one.
I'd, I would put it in the public hearing as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and then after that, we just have demographic questions and, uh, open-ended.
As, as far as the demographic questions, how, how much of this augments census data?
Um, it just concerns it with the census data. So let's say, uh, let, let's say the median income in inland township, median household income is like eighty thousand. If all of our respondents are over a hundred fifty thousand, it, it gives us some clue as to, you know, we, we didn't get like the typical inland resident. We got, we had someone a little bit, uh, more educated or older or without children in the household. Et cetera, et cetera. Someone who, we only got people who have lived here for more than fifteen years. We didn't get any younger residents. And all of that we can track with the census as well. We have, we have housing tenure and, um, household makeup with children and income and all of that. So it's just to cross-reference it to make sure that we, that the people we got responses from are representative of the typical inland resident.
Do you, do you see that you get, get response to that question, as far as income?
Yeah, uh, so Manistee County, um, we just did their master plan. And I think their median income name bracket, like, I think it was like forty percent of the county was between fifty to seventy-five thousand, and almost all of our respondents were, were close to in that range. And then, you know, other teams that we've worked with, uh, well, I, I guess I'll use Manistee County as an example again. Um, everyone who responded, almost everyone who responded was at least forty-five years old. And so, you know, that's not uncommon because they have a high median age, but we hardly got anybody in the under thirty crowd. Um, so.
What, what is your normal percentage as far as response?
Um, it's lower for the digital surveys. Um, you know, you, you'll get a higher response rate if you're mailing something. So if you guys wanted to send the QR coding link on your, well, you just wouldn't have the water bill, would you?
No.
You guys are all on Wild Water, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, so you have a water bill. Um, is your Facebook group pretty active?
Oh.
No.
Okay, and, you know, it's going to be really word of mouth or, you know, we'll do a press release when the survey goes out. So it'll be in, probably the ticker and the record eagle, or what, what are you guys primarily getting, Benzy?
Record Patriot.
Record Patriot, okay. So, you know, we would reach out to them and we can do, uh, we'll do a press release with the Record Patriot. Um, and anyone else that you think would be useful to get with?
Well, we, you and I talked, uh, I believe, uh, mid-December about sending out a postcard. Uh, because not, not everyone in the township is also, uh, digital friendly, let's just leave it there. Um, you know, and if, if you want a paper survey, stop in the office and pick one up. Um, but also it would be a, you know, put the QR code on there, would be a way of notifying people quickly, you know, here, take, take the survey over here. You know, everybody in the household, take the survey, you know, we encourage you, you know, that kind of thing.
I have a question about those. So you were mentioning, um, Manistee for the survey. But almost all, um, response were from people forty-five and older. Was this, uh, digital or paper?
That one was digital.
What, what was their response rate roughly?
It was low, so they only had, I think, a hundred and twenty total responses.
Out of, what's the?
Uh, I think the population of Manistee is something like fifteen thousand. So it's very low.
Percentage-wise, I think we beat that with a, uh, a very brief survey that we sent out last summer with the tax bill that a lot of people didn't even know was there because they didn't know, open their tax bill until weeks later. Um, but we actually got a, a pretty good response, so.
Yeah, the, the tax bill works really well. Um, the, the postcard we did, uh, it, it's called Every Door Direct Mail, so. It, but that, so we did that for Lake City, but it goes by zip code. It doesn't go by municipality. Um, so we overlapped with some people we didn't want to reach and we missed some people that we didn't want to reach, but we covered most of the community. Um.
Well, we, we can also, we, we can.
I would just say we did Every Door Direct Mail because that's cheaper than regular postage. Um, if you did regular postage, I could run that cost if you're interested in doing that. It, it does get fairly expensive pretty quick because, you know, there's the printing cost and then, and then the postage.
Can you give us, can you give us that and, and also your, uh, what'd you call it, direct post?
Uh.
Every Door Direct Mail.
I, I can look at, I, I would want to look at the Every Door Direct Mail map that the USPS provides because it might be that you guys have some, uh, zip codes that don't work well with doing that route.
And I think we do have one.
Yeah, we, we have three different zip codes and I mean, we're, majority of inland is interlocking, which is crazy.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, I, 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 not, not that I want to spend a lot of the township's money, but I think considering that this is the master plan that we're talking about, it's every five years. Uh, I, I think the expense, and I, I think it's a tip of the hat to our residents. The more we can reach out, the better job we can do in reaching out. I think it's worth the expense. Um, you know, and for the incremental expense, I mean, I think you guys are worth every penny we're paying. That's, that's not an issue. But, you know, we're, we're into this for a fair amount to begin with, to spend a little extra to make sure that every household, and we can provide the, you know, either us directly or, uh, through the county. We can provide, uh, mailing labels for every, every single household in the township. So, you know, yes, there's going to be costs involved, but I, I, I think that the more we can encourage people to participate, which the first step is letting them know that there's a survey to participate in.
And that's going to be a hot spot.
Stuff, then, uh, I think it's worth the expense.
So what about, so you were mentioning either doing a postcard with the QR code and maybe mentioning on it, you can come to the township and get your paper copy. What about having like a paper copy that have the QR codes, um, somewhere on the first page?
So a paper copy of the survey?
Where's the QR codes?
Oh, that'd be easy.
So they would, so that, that is where, that's actually where it becomes very expensive because then you have to pay for the return postage to, if you're trying to get paper copies back.
Oh, that's why you're pushing the digital?
Sure, that makes sense.
Yeah, because then you're paying for postage twice.
Can't you, um, can't you just say, please drop it in the mailbox?
You can drop it off at the township hall.
But you're relying on them to pay for postage for a survey that the government's something.
To, to drop it on the mailbox.
Well, let's see, and my, my, my experience in doing surveys, I actually don't have a problem doing your first-class letter with a first-class return envelope in it, uh, to collect a paper survey, you know.
Yeah, we did that in Wild Water Township and Grand Travers. Um, but like I said, so then you're, you're, you have to print all the surveys.
I, 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 I understand all the chunks involved. I, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just proffering the argument that as a government, we owe it to our residents to try to reach out the best we can. And if, if it costs a little bit more, uh, you know, we're, we're not talking the difference between a couple of thousand dollars and, you know, a hundred thousand dollars to do it. You know, we're, maybe we're doubling the cost.
What are we even, what kind of number are we?
You know, yeah, I mean, you know, so I, I think.
Twenty-four hundred residents?
Well, twenty-four hundred residents, but not as many households.
Like nine hundred households, I think.
Uh, I, I would have said eleven hundred.
Stamps are seventy-three cents, huh?
Yeah, I mean. It, it's, it's more expensive than a, a sharp stick in the eye, but, um.
So, uh, and when we talked before, so I guess, you know, there's, there's different ways to do this. Obviously, I would agree, the send a paper survey with a return envelope, uh, already, already posted. That is the, you'll get the highest response rate with that method. That, that is the expensive of, you know. I, I think we charge something like, uh.
Well, they, they.
Because when we, we have to enter in all this.
I was going to say the expenses, the expenses of the compilation. Which, which is why when we talked last December, the hybrid of sending out a postcard everywhere. Uh, you know, and letting people know that if, if they are real lotites and don't have a laptop and don't have a smartphone, you know, they can still participate by stopping in the township hall, picking up a paper survey. And the handful of those that we would do, we pay you to, you know, have somebody sit down and plug them into the system.
Yeah, so I'll give you the, I'll give you kind of the four main options just for a synopsis. And then I can, if you want, I can get costs associated with each one, so.
Yeah, I think that would, that would be.
The one that's already included in, uh, the contract is a digital survey. The next level up from that would be a postcard to every residence with a QR code and link. The next level up from that would be, um, sending out a paper copy with, uh, a, a posted return envelope. And the planning commission enters the data that, that you received back. And then the most expensive option would be paper survey, return envelope, and that one's what's last enters the email.
Okay, yeah, yeah, if you can give us, uh, some estimates on those, so.
Yeah, I'll get that too before the end of the week.
Okay, the, the, the one thing when, when you do option three and four, um, if they are, um, and what, what are they called? Not, not prepaid, but, you know, we don't have to put a, we don't have to go to the expense of putting an actual stamp on it. Uh, if, if we get it a prepaid, prepaid, posted prepaid, uh, meter, we only get charged if it actually gets sent. So if, you know, three quarters of these wind up in the waste bin, uh, we don't get charged for that return posted. We are charged obviously for all the printing, but, um, you know, that's, that's the name of the game. And if, if you could in your estimates also give us a, um, and they can be ballpark, uh, they can even be ranges if you want. What experience do you have as a company across all of the different municipalities you've done? You know, doing digital, what's the response rate? Send, sending a, you know, paper form with the posted paid return, what's the response rate? I, I think that's going to be very important.
Yeah, will do. Um, let me just, uh, just looking at the population of Wild Water Township. And I'll probably get four hundred thousand for the master plan survey. Uh, and they have roughly the same population as you all. They're at about twenty-seven hundred.
That's great. That's very good. Um, and I'll, I'll get you an exact number of mailing addresses. Uh, hopefully I can get to that tomorrow.
Okay, yep, I'll just scroll that out. Um, yeah, because if I had an example where I could pull the copy chart and ask them how much they charge for postcard printing and, um.
You're using the right place.
Because I, I would go nowhere else.
Absolutely.
So, Zach, um, Jim has put together some other questions. And can I ask him to, uh, email that to you? There's some overlap, there's some overlap, but there's also a couple of items that, uh, that, uh, are more specific to, to us. So, um, if we can take a look at, at those and talk about that.
Perfect. Yeah, I would just say, um, uh, I'll get your emails, uh, from Jim. I'd like to be able to send stuff out to the local planning commission.
Perfect.
If I'm ever able. I'll send out a, a, a survey based on what we talked about tonight and then those additional questions. Um, and then you can just look it over. Then at the next meeting, we can pretty quickly. Uh, and then you can just look over that later at the next meeting. We can pretty quickly finalize it. Um, and then whatever, you know, you have to do behind the scenes to get funding for whatever survey option you go with. Um, but we can spend the rest of that meeting sort of going into some topic areas. And um that that'll help me with some information to start writing the plan.
Yeah, so our next uh board meeting is is next Monday, the tenth. If you can give us your estimates on those options, we can bring that up to the board to to let them know what we're thinking and show show some options there. Then our next uh planning commission meeting is the seventeenth. Um, we do have one, one person coming in, um, so maybe uh we can meet on the seventeenth. I meant, I guess I'd have to ask, um, on your proposal, how many, how many uh meetings with us are you scheduled?
Um, it it's scheduled for eight, but um that's really just to protect us in case a commission's dragging its feet.
Understand, smart move. Understand.
Yeah, yeah, so I I'll say, um, I I've I've been able to get plans done with six meetings. I've had others that have taken more and it was just a matter of what the public was bringing to us was really interesting and had to dive further into it. Um, it it it's it's a hard test over the contract. Just if if we were spending five meetings on the on the survey, that that's why that's.
Understood.
Yeah, we don't, we don't really want to do that, but.
Uh, your your meeting concludes a public hearing?
Uh, public hearing separate.
Okay.
Public hearing separate, uh, public and possession is separate.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so, um, I guess the question is, do we want him to show up on the seventeenth? Or we're meeting.
I'm available, I'm available that evening.
Why why don't you pencil yourself in? I I think that depends on how successful we are with the board a week from today.
Well.
Mine guess it does.
It doesn't, yeah, I don't think that matters at this point. I think that's.
Sure.
Okay, why don't you put us in for coming in on the seventeenth?
Six P M?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Sounds good.
Great. Okay, and I'll get you the email addresses of those folks here and.
Get them the right one.
Hopefully. Jim, Jim has a bunch of them and I've got old ones and new ones and I have to be really careful.
All right, so just from you guys, I'm looking for uh additional uh survey questions to add in. Um, any edits that you have until that next planning commission meeting, just send those directly to me. Um, if you want my email address right now.
Yes, I got it. They have, they have copies of you.
You just share that with the group?
Yeah. It's on the survey, the front page of the survey, so.
Okay, so I'm just looking for any survey edits and uh the number of how I was supposed to do emails.
Okay, got it.
Great. Okay, thanks, Zach.
All set?
Thank you.
All set. All set. See you on the seventeenth.
Okay. All right. Any thoughts?
You you want me to go over what I put together? One of the I under I understand that this this is primarily a survey to focus the master plan. But one one of the things that I think is kind of hanging out there that ties into the master plan is we've got this huge budget surplus, you know, much larger than we need to hang on to. And I think it should be part of the survey to just directionally, what do you think we should do with it? Because there there are so many things floating around. Um, you know, we've we've talked about a community center, but it's just been blocked. There's there's no direction to it. Um, four years ago now, I think, we bought this thirty acre parcel. Well, depending on who you talk to, we either bought it because it was a real deal. I don't know if it was, but uh it was for a new fire hall. Well, you don't need a thirty acre fire hall unless you're, you know, in L A or something and they need more help than we can offer. Uh, but, you know, that's a question. The the surplus that we have, should it go towards a community center? Should it go towards a fire hall? Uh, should we be remodeling what we have here, you know, some more office space? Uh, there are some things that the fire department wants to do with the floor in their current space, make it a little bit more livable. Uh, or we we don't want any changes. We're a bedroom community. We just, we want it to stay the same, darn it. Uh, let's let's figure out a, you know, three to five year plan to return some of that tax money to the taxpayers. Uh, or, you know, we we want to improve the inland park. We don't know. I mean, there's a lot of talk and depending on who you talk to, you know, the wind blows this way, the wind blows that way. I think that in a very general way should be a question.
At least was a question for the first survey, right?
Not really. The the first survey went out was, uh, the initial thought was, uh, we have well over two hundred thousand dollars left in ARPA money that came from the whole COVID disaster. What do we can, having looked up the use of that, it can be used for anything. We use some for salaries. Uh, we actually moved everything into the general fund now, backpaying salaries. So we still have the money. That's not the issue. How we use it, it could be used in a bunch of different ways. A lot of communities use it to improve their parks. And that's the talk that we're going through the board. Um, you know, it it too could actually have been just returned to the taxpayer. You know, so, you know, it it was kind of a question and then in in addition to all the possibilities for the park, uh, the kind of a last minute thought we threw on, I'm trying to think, roads. And uh I think it would prove the town hall were the two things. And completely out of nowhere, improve improve the roads, just swamped everything else as far as the results, which are on uh the new website, inland township mi.gov. Uh, it's the front page. You can download it. Um, do we, do we want to spend all that money on improving our roads? I don't know. Let's ask the people, which is why I'm so big on, let's spend a little bit of that surplus to find out what people really want so that we're not just, you know, parking on the.
Yeah, I know we had a budget, so.
Yeah, so.
That would be a couple of concerns.
One is, I would eliminate the one million. I would just say a surplus.
Oh, you don't think that?
That gives them an expectation of that. And then I'm wondering if they read the refund. They might say, oh, I want that. Um, but that doesn't get us into.
Yeah, a million surplus.
Well, it varies.
Right, I didn't know that one.
Can you look at the actual budget? Depending on the time you look at it, it could be a million, possibly be nine hundred thousand.
Right, right.
So it's, it varies, but. Sure, which is fine, but I I think setting expectations that it's it's that much. Um, I'm wondering about refund to taxpayers since if if somebody looks that.
If that, see, if that's an option that people want, that's that's the option that we should give them. And if it's overwhelming, that's.
That's a hard decision.
Yeah, find out, right?
Yeah, and and the reality is, somebody might say, well, how much? Maybe ten bucks, I don't, I don't know. And and another question is, how do we do that? Giving back, do we give it to the current owners? Do we give it to previous owners? Do we give it?
We, I, we, we've had some with with Manner Casterison, Meener Casterison. Uh, and you you can't track down previous taxpayers and how much of that it was it was from them. So it would go back. It would, it would be a tax reduction, what little uh we can offer through the township. Uh, and the best way to do it is not all at once, uh, because that throws people's budgeting and planning off. But uh, you know, to do it in a three to five year period, you know, so that it is something that we can react to and it's it's not necessarily a guarantee either. You know, if if all of a sudden something happens that uh the economy goes into the tank, and we need more funds than we thought, or or do we stop doing the services that that you thought? It it's all part of an education process and um I I think that, you know, the details are something that uh by the time we get to a public hearing, I think we should be prepared to answer in general, you know, the the average taxpayer pays this much, you know, for, you know, or, you know, break it down on, you know, per hundred thousand dollars of taxes. Uh, and we'd be talking about, you know, being able to offset the five percent increase each year. You know, so basically you hold steady for five years and and just, you know, spitballing right now.
When, you know, when we say refund, maybe a refund, maybe as you just said, or in your net same interest. I don't know, I guess I just said.
Well, it's a refund taxpayer through reduced taxes over, you know, it's it's not necessarily, you know, or just say reduce taxes over the next three to five years. Um,
Maybe you say.
But but I I think.
Expectations there.
Well.
Wait down there, maybe let's wait down there and see if we can.
Well, let's let's look at it.
I mean, as I.
Let's look at it better. I I don't want to be part of I'm thinking of this now more in my core position than as a planning commission. As a government, we shouldn't be just looking, how can we spend, spend, spend? If if the majority of, and I I know, if one out of a hundred people say, I want my money back, that's sorry buddy, that doesn't work that way. But if ninety out of a hundred surveys come back and say that's their preference, we don't, we don't need a community center. I I moved here because it was a fine community and I, you know, leave me alone, leave my pocket full of money, you know?
I don't think that would be necessary. I don't really see much happening at that township park either. I don't think, I mean, it's there. There'd be a lot more there.
Well, then there are people that very vehemently would disagree with you. Because I walk, I walk, I drive there every day, my kids play there, you know, just.
Yeah, that's good. I mean, it's up great for that. It's that, that walking path and everything.
Maybe younger family will say, we want to.
Right. So it's just, I I I think it's a, uh, let's work on rewording the the question so it's not as apparently it's very attractive to you to to say, I want my money back, uh, you know?
No, I mean, just.
Or you think it's attractive to others.
I, but what I'm concerned with is, oh, I want my money back. That would look at saying. Well, what do we need? I mean, do we need a fire side? I don't think we need a new fire hall, but ten years on.
Again, Tom, you have to say that survey that tells you. Like, like, I don't say, so I was always still a bad person. I don't use that, I can't keep talking.
And you before didn't know that until last year. That's part of the problem and and.
It's been mentioned a huge moment. Yeah, maybe we need to, I don't know, be right to seal, so like, what planning commission?
We know.
My daughter, this is.
We're talking about a township where people haven't been involved or have been pushed away from being involved. You know, and I, I I think if if that's what you think they gravitate for so quickly, and that's what they do gravitate for, my my responsibility as a trustee is to support that.
Well, I understand that, but with the thing I'm saying, the township class, when you say refund taxpayers for the next three to five years, so one million dollars, that's going to go away.
That's a big, I think, yeah.
And looking at, you know, we can actually do as far as the tax dollars, you know, we got road taxes.
That's not part of the surplus.
I I understand, but but as far as the amount of money we take out each taxes and in comparison to those all tax bill, you know, it's it's small, it's a small amount. And if we go through, do what Dave wanted to do, is I'm getting rid of, I'm not suggesting that. Yeah, but what's the vehicle to reduce, we're talking about reduced taxes? You know, what's the vehicle to do that? But I used to, yeah. So I don't know what I'm saying, this is, I've got million dollars there. So there's a, yeah, I don't see some of that come back. How do we do that?
We adjust the mileage.
That's what I'm trying to get to, the amount of mileage that we actually take, that we can actually use or or take up. It's not, it's not huge. It's not a big amount.
We we can adjust more than one mileage. We could actually adjust all the millages and bal- balance our our budget.
Okay, that's a possibility too, but then again, when when Dave came out and said, we want to get rid of this, our our operating mileage, Art was back there saying, well, we never be, we might not ever be able to get it back.
Because Dave wanted the zero at all.
Well, I understand.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting we do that.
I'm I'm not saying that either. I'm saying if we reduce, even if we reduce each one and augment with that million dollars into those funds, can we actually increase it after five years?
Yes, 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 yes.
I don't know.
I'm telling you, absolutely yes. This comes from Meener Casterison. This doesn't come from me.
Okay, well, I, I'm concerned.
I understand.
Yeah.
But but and and I I don't object to rewording the question in a way that that you find more acceptable. But I think to pull it completely takes a very viable option that should should be discussed.
See, when we get back, see, yeah, I'll see.
Well, that's, I think that his way is not to take the opportunity to address something that the board is maybe interested in knowing because it doesn't really have a, it really doesn't have a lot to do. It's just using the survey that we're paying for to have more information for for something else that has nothing to do with the pressure.
Well, it it.
Taking the opportunity because we're playing post survey. And that's better.
No. No, we have a surplus. Let's forget about the amount. We can do a lot of different things with the surplus. We could put it, I mean, it's not going to pay for a new fire hall. It's not going to pay for a community center. You know, if you want to put it.
Yeah, that's why you put additional cost, take.
Could be additional cost there.
Right.
It certainly would pay for some renovations to this building, you know, to a great extent. It would pay for, one of the things for the park that people are looking for is a permanent restroom, which I have reservations about that, but that's, that's what people want. Let's let's do our best job. One of one of the potential options is, I don't want any changes. And I think by not, by not putting something out there that offers that, that as a taxpayer, I could at least, at least flatten my tax rate increase for the next three to five years. Maybe there's a better way and I'll I'll tap Bethany to see if she's got a better way of phrasing it. That is an option to not spend my money, I think is is a fair thing to put on the survey. And if you have more people saying, stop spending my money, you're, you're clearly because of this surplus that we have now, we're way over taxed. What are we going to do to fix that? Part of our responsibility as a planning commission isn't just this master plan, but it's coming up with a I just had it from my head too. Capital improvement program. Capital as in dollar signs, you know, so what things do we, you know, and this goes towards also things that we need to improve. And we don't need to improve all that much. I don't know because we haven't sent the survey out. But I do know that if we don't put that in as an option, nobody's going to say, give me a tax refund or give me a give me a tax break for the next three to five years until.
Let's, yeah, let's maybe try to rephrase.
Well, let's, let's rephrase it some way.
Yes. Just getting the survey. Yeah, that's good.
A lot of these other questions, so they're out there on the floor. We're just kind of rephrasing from the original examples Zach gave us.
Okay. On the second page, well, that's a good.
I'm thinking of other options. Getting out to people.
All right, I think those are good. That was my concern. Okay.
Yeah, for now, because we're still going on this, we're next time, I'm going to listen to that.
All right. Uh, do, do we, one of the things that I did like in the original survey that he sent out to us was more of a, you know, rather than just ticking a box or, or a yes, no, as we discussed, um, was having a, you know, a weighted scale. A house, house, you know, and maybe we put something like that along. The first question is, you know, how strongly do you think we need a, you know, we need a new fire hall? I strongly agree. I somewhat agree. I somewhat disagree.
I think, I think that'd be a good idea to do that or rank them like, like one, two, three or.
One of the problems with ranking and part of it was just the layout. We, Trace and I understood what we meant. Uh, we didn't give an example and I, I, I think the, the ranking is, is good, but I think it's confusing.
Well, actually I was one of the ones that didn't do it right.
You, you weren't, you weren't the only one or, or, you know, people actually went through and we had, and got a number of different options, went through, you know, here are my four ones, here are my, you know, three twos, I got a whole bunch of threes.
Yeah, because it's running about selecting those surveys and it turns you off.
Thank you, Art.
More information.
Right.
That's kind of what my concern on this is that someone's sort of focusing on that. Okay, well, we've got to get money back and I don't know how much. Kind of like to see other options.
Yeah, this is a very good idea. We should, we should do something like that.
Yeah, it's good. Good to have them in the survey, but yeah, maybe we should.
Because sometimes people just like click the box and they don't really care, but they just want to keep as an answer.
I, I thought Zach's comments about the demographic information at the end of the survey was interesting. We had, you know, the stuff, we, we had some conversation prior to the meeting. What are your, what are your thoughts on asking, you know, household income?
Income, I think is a little sneaky.
Well, it was an interesting approach too.
I mean, you need to really give up your income, but I think that's.
Well, you still have the option to say, oh, no, or not answer. We were a little skeptical about that, but he.
Why do we need to know their income?
I think.
Like you said, yeah, young people probably won't participate.
Zach had some interesting answers that actually kind of, you know.
He doesn't get a lot.
These demographics.
I mean, that's, that's.
So, you know, but. Don't know or won't answer. I mean, they're frequently I do not respond to either age or financial questions in this survey. None of your business.
I was starting with Zach on the 17th. We're going to have a.
Meanwhile, there'll be some back and forth on modifying this.
Yeah, right.
Include everybody. And if there are questions in, in, uh, New World Land out there, send them to, you can send them to me, trustee@inlandtownship.org or you want?
Okay. I don't have an address yet.
We'll, we'll do that.
Okay. In public hearing, public hearing. Yes. So, 6:32. Okay.
We adjourned.
I'll send that on a paper.
All right.
And then post.
Goodbye TV land.
All right, guys.